Good evening. Thank you and welcome. We are going to call to order the regular meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, June 8th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar.
Oh, no.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Mr. Bravo.
Here.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mrs. McKendrick.
Here.
Thank you.
And if we could all mute our screens and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you so much. And I can see everyone again. All right. So we are going to start with community and school reflections tonight. And before we do, we've got a lot of ground to cover, and I wanted to give a few words and kind of combine my president's report into our community and school reflections, just because it's a little more timely than coming back to it. But this is certainly one of the more difficult, but also bittersweet, school board meetings that we've had in recent history. We have so many reasons to be celebrating right now, so many reasons to be congratulating and happy. We've wrapped up our 1920 school year. We've completed senior graduations or completing senior graduations, our eighth grade graduations, our kindergarten graduations. We finished our 2020 Teacher of the Year awards ceremony this last Friday. And congratulations to Maggie Oliver, to all of the nominees. Maggie is a special ed teacher at Helen Arnold that we want to say and send a big heartfelt congratulations her way on that honor and for also being the first to be a virtual awardee for our Teacher of the Year. We certainly thought it was important to continue that tradition, and we wanted to be able to still honor that. So we did it virtually, and it turned out fantastic. So many thanks to all of the staff as well, who helped put that together and make it go so seamlessly. But I think our hearts are all a little heavy this evening, as well as so many in our community, not only are still dealing with COVID-related issues like unemployment and trying to figure out what's coming next, but also our Akron Public Schools lost one of its own in our family recently, and Tylea Junius, she was a 14-year-old student who lost her life in a senseless and completely preventable act of violence. And our hearts, our thoughts, and our prayers certainly go out to her family and to the community around her. And through another senseless and completely preventable act of violence, our community has been mourning the loss of George Floyd and what that means, not only here in the city of Akron, but around the country. And we've seen our community respond certainly in recent days, the response of this board and the response of this community. And in a moment, I'd like to hear from each of you. I know you have community and school reflections that you'd like to share. Some may be congratulatory and some maybe on most recent events, but I also want to say that I'm proud of each of you, both individually and as a board, for your response and for the way that you have wrapped your arms and your hearts around each other and around this community and around our Akron Public Schools family. And after we hear from each of you, Dr. Akbar is going to provide some remarks, and he's also going to do a brief presentation of his own that he's requested to submit to this board. And he'll also be introducing the resolution that all of you have been working on this last week, that you've been busy working on. But before I do that, I would like to ask those of you participating and those of you who may be at home watching this, to join me in just a moment of peace. And in a moment, I'll ask and encourage each of you to reflect on the difficulties that we face, not only as a district, but as a community and as a nation. Reflect just a moment on those issues we face and ask yourselves, what is my role? And what is my responsibility? What can I do? How can I help change, bring change, healing, and peace? And so if you'll join me for just a moment, in a brief but silent moment of peace, thank you. Thank you so much for that moment of peace. And as we begin to share our community and school reflections, I also want to thank the other leaders in our community who have been active and listening over the last several days and leading. Our faith leaders, our elected officials, our community champions and organizers, our nonprofit community, and so many more that have really stepped up and have been stepping up. And many of them have been talking about this for years, and some people just haven't been listening. And I want to thank the organizers that put together the Summit County Black Elected Officials and Community Leaders Standing in Unity event this past Saturday. What an amazing event to be at and to see all of our Akron Public Schools family coming out to stand in unity and to support. And there were so many of them there, and I'm sure some of you will talk about that, so I don't want to steal too much thunder there. But I just want to say thank you. And importantly, too, I want to thank each of you, board members, Dr. Akbar, Dr. Hall, and Ms. Autry, for your words on Saturday, your words of encouragement for what you poured into us that day. It really meant a lot. And I continue to learn from each of you every day, and I really appreciate what you had to share. I want to thank our mayor, Dan Horrigan, for standing and for kneeling for what is right and just in this community and for being there and being a good example. And last but certainly not least, I also want to thank our superintendent for his words this past week and for his leadership and this and in many things. So with that, I'd like to open it up, and I know that, and I will be watching, so I'm going to do my best. We've got a lot, and I know that many of you have some words to share. Valerie has already commented that she has a community and school reflection, so we'll let her kick us off there. Valerie?
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. First, I would also like to add my voice to myriad others in my condemnation of the police actions that caused the death of George Floyd. However, I strongly support the rights of citizens to gather and to peaceful protest. Next, I too would like to extend my heartfelt condolences to the family of Tylea Junius. And as this school year has wound down, I'd like to thank Dr. James for his leadership during this unprecedented period, and to the entire APS faculty and staff for their professionalism and unwavering selflessness in putting our students' needs first. And to end on a positive note, congratulations to the APS Teacher of the Year, Margaret Oliver from Helen Arnold, and to all the building winners. And last but certainly not least, my sincere congratulations to the class of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would someone like to go next?
I'll go.
Mr. Alexander.
I'd like to say some of the same things that Valerie said as well, Ms. McKendrick, rather. And again, congratulations to the teacher year. I'm always in support and love this time of the year because of the teacher year ceremony. Unfortunately, we didn't get a chance to be there physically, but virtually, I was there, listening and watching, watching what was happening, and it was still good. And congratulations to, again, Maggie Oliver and all the award winners who were there that night and received an award. Also, thank you to our, and congratulations to our seniors. This is the first part of their journey that they're moving into another. And it's important for us to support them and encourage them. And despite them not having to have a real graduation this year where they could actually be there with each other, we still support, I want to let them know that we support them and thank them for everything that they have done and the hard work, their parents, teachers, and administrators, everyone, including our administrators as well and our superintendent. And also, I want to thank my fellow board members. I was unfortunately unable to make Saturday's Black Elected Officials stance, but I want to thank them for being there. Dr. Hall, Dr. Akbar, Ms. Autry, for being there and giving encouraging words and standing up and showing the support for all of us who are board members here at Akron Public Schools and letting people know that we really care about what goes on with our kids, but not just our kids, but our community as well. So I wanted to say thank you to them. And thank you to our superintendent as well for being down there and showing support with all the other officials who were elected, as well as those administrators in our county and in our city as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Alexander. Ms. Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to, I would echo all that you said. I think what you said so well is that it feels like ourselves, right, we're in mourning at the same time that we're celebrating. And so it's difficult to talk about the happy because our hearts are so heavy. But I don't want to let this moment go past without thanking our staff for the flip that we did, switching from brick and mortar to virtual and the hard work and just watching what they were able to do with students the last few weeks. Just so incredible. So huge thanks to them and the admin that led. I want to echo the thoughts of watching Saturday as I, as our newest board members truly took not just the stage, but the city and their hands and led. And I am so proud to serve with all of you. I've had the verse from Esther just stuck in my head about how you're here to serve for a time such as this. And we never know when people are elected, what's going to happen and how things are going to go. And all I could think since Saturday was how proud I am that you all were there and that we could all stand together and the leadership and the knowledge you imparted. I'm so grateful and grateful for those who served before. Reverend Walker was there, Sims was there, Linda Mobian, and Ms. Baylor. And so all that I've learned from, don't take for granted as well. And I would encourage folks out there to continue to reach out, to continue, as you all said, to hold us accountable, but to also look to what this board does bring and how grateful we are to serve this community of Akron. And we, I just, I love it here. I love what we've, what we can do together. So thank you so much. There are some great books out there. If anyone is interested in, I've ordered a few that have been recommended by some friends, because it's not everyone's job to teach us, right? It's also our job to learn. And so I'm here still with open ears and an open heart. And this is what we preach, and it's what I want to, what I want to do in my life. So thank you all for everything. Can't let 2020 go by without also talking about what a great job our principals did at the graduations. I was really blessed and fortunate to be able to have Firestone right outside. So I was out for a walk and got to see some of theirs. Thank you to the neighbors who put up with pomp and circumstance for, I think, four days straight outside at Firestone. I got to see our student school board member, Monisha, graduated at North. What a fabulous job they did converting North High School into Graduation Central. And also, I was honored to be asked by students to present his diploma by his family at Ellett. So kudos to Ms. Kearns for the hard work at Ellett as well. So just a strange year, but a beautiful graduation, all of them. And we're so proud of you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Ms. Autry?
Yeah, I just want to echo Mrs. Mansfield on the commencement ceremonies and all of those involved in getting it organized. I was able to be a part of Buckdose graduation. And what I did find is that it was so much more personal for each and every student. And you know that infamous speech that everyone gives, please hold your applause to the end? Well, we didn't have to do that this time. Everyone got their own applause and no one was chush. So I appreciate that. It did make things a little personal. Also, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Teckah, Mrs. Gijik, and Mr. Lawson. As we continue to learn about the different departments amidst the pandemic and everything else that's going on, I appreciate them taking the time so that we can learn more about what they do. And then just briefly, you know, the issue that has united everyone around, not only the city, the state, the country, but the globe. And I just feel like we are poised to really be a part of history as we move forward. And condolences to the George Floyd family as we move forward, just hoping that we approach everything we do on this war with a renewed, refreshed approach that's deliberate and intentional as we address those challenges that African Americans face on a daily basis. And then lastly, I just wanted to give my respects as well to the Junius family, who I was privileged to work with personally. The young lady, Tylea, was a frequent volunteer, following in the footsteps of her grandmother, who's an awesome volunteer for the district as well. And I did say lastly, but there is a lastly, Mr. or Dr. James put out a really powerful message that I was happy to share. And I just wanted to thank him for those words because they were very impactful to me and others.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you so much. Dr. Hall?
Thanks, Mr. President. So first, and I know that I'll be hard pressed to add anything different than what you've probably already heard from my wise and very esteemed colleagues. But again, I would like to sort of start by, again, you know, thanking my fellow board members, thanking the superintendent, you know, our treasurer, Dr. Mel Williams Woods as well, you know, for all that they've done, you know, while we've all been through a lot, you know, they're the ones that are in there every day, you know, really trying to sort of address and sort of suss out, you know, these nuanced and complex issues and problems as they arrive almost daily. You know, I'd also be remiss if I didn't also echo, you know, many of your comments as related to us using, us losing young Tylea, you know, that there are really, there are times when you say there just are no words, and there just are no words, you know. This is not the first time that's happened, you know, where we've lost young people in these kinds of circumstances, you know, across the country. You know, this happens far too often. And so, again, there just are no words. And so, you know, my heart, all I can say is that my heart breaks for her and her family and friends. You know, also, you know, I had, you know, on my heart, you know, the event on Saturday as well, I had a chance to, you know, as Mr. President sort of acknowledged, that many, again, you know, many of you were all there, you know, and, you know, I think it's, as I said on Saturday, you know, we've talked a lot of, a lot of, I guess, a lot of words have been spoken by a lot of folks. And, you know, and whether there be, whether they be, you know, Instagram posts or Facebook posts or whatnot. And, you know, and there have been politicians and celebrities that have all kind of weighed in, and companies have weighed in, you know, expressing some support and wanting to be a part of a solution. And so, as I said Saturday, you know, now is the time for acting, you know. And so now is the time for action, you know. And it's time for us to engage in the kinds of, kinds of meaningful actions that will lead to lasting and sustained change. And so I know, we all, we all have our part to play upon that stage, you know. And so whether it's the federal, the state, or the local level. And I think that is being, you know, the collective body that is accountable for how we educate and train the young minds in this city, I would submit that there's an enhanced responsibility upon all of us to ensure that we're doing all that we can, you know, to be graduating people that we can be proud of, you know, both in the short, medium, and long term. And, you know, I, you know, Ms. Mansfield, I too had a Bible verse that's been in my mind, and that's the Book of James, chapter one, verse 22, which where we're cautioned to, you know, be not just doers of the word, but I'm sorry, I'm trying to be doers of the word and not just listeners only. And so, again, the time, you know, again, listening is great, words are great, but now again, it's time for action. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you and, you know, being a part of a larger collective community conversation where, again, we convert these words and actions that can lead to sustained change. And last but not least, you know, I too want to try to end things on a positive note as well, and just acknowledge the Teacher of the Year, Ms. Oliver. And, you know, and I have to say, there were a number of technical difficulties that they had to overcome that evening. So I think the power went out and some other things. And so I just want to congratulate them on hanging in there, you know. Again, and also want to add my words of congratulations to Ms. Oliver as well. And then, and then finally, last but not least, of course, congratulations to the class of 2020. And, you know, while I know that many of them, you know, perhaps feel that, that they did, I think the word I heard used was they felt like, some people felt like they were gypped. I hadn't heard that word in a while. They felt like they were, they were, they were gypped, or they were, you know, slighted or just robbed of an experience. And, and so, but I do, I do believe that in the years to come, you know, I think that they will come to embrace, you know, the uniqueness of the circumstances in which they graduated. I think I heard Ms. Autry made the comment about how personal it was. And it was, the, again, effort goes into this every year for our kids, but, but I have to say that I think we outdid ourselves as a district this year. And it was so very personal. And so, again, I think, I know many, many of them feel like they were, they missed out, but I think in the years to come, I think that they will actually embrace the uniqueness of their experience. So, Mr. President, I think that would conclude my remarks. And again, want to thank all of you for your time.
Thank you so much. And seeing here with the Teacher of the Year, I tried to cover for him and talk about how smoothly it went and.
Yeah, well, again, I want to acknowledge that, again, you know, these are tough times and, you know, yeah, something can go wrong, it goes wrong. And so, it's, so they did a great job. So it was a great ceremony. So.
Well, thank you all for sharing. And, you know, speaking of, of action and, and words and the scriptures that were shared, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Akbar now. Dr. Akbar?
Yeah. Yes, thank you. So I have a presentation I'm going to share. And as I pull that up, I just want to say I too send my heart out to the family of Tylea Junius, as well as everyone who's hurting for the multiple countless acts of violence, which includes police brutality. So. And then lastly, their three-part series of the May Festival was phenomenal. So if you didn't get a chance to watch, it's still on YouTube. And I think, let me know if you can see it.
We can see it.
All right. There you go. All right. So racism has been a common topic across this city, as we've talked about so far. And those discussions have been difficult. But as a black man, for me, those discussions have been exhausting. I just continue to have feelings where myself and others who are victims of racism's sharpshooter precision, we feel that feeling of exhaustion. And as a scholar and as a professional, it is my duty to press for it through that exhaustion. But I must admit that with the stresses of COVID-19 surrounding all of our realities, I have become overwhelmed by just yet another example where racism and inhumanity has reared this ugly head. I have been overwhelmed by the constant outrage I feel of insecurity as a black man in America and the significant weight that the recent deaths have involved. Now, let's be clear, police brutality and racism are not new. Still, I remain committed to educating and moving forward with actions, as we all just talked about, specifically to address racism and dismantle it as it appears in the educational system. And when I think about racism, I think about a story of a young boy, a 16-year-old, young black boy who woke up one morning on one humid summer day, excited to start his new summer job. As he drove into work, he was all smiles. And those smiles continued as he walked in the office for the first time. And as he continued to do his daily tasks that day, he was still all smiles until later in the day when he and another black boy were scheduled to meet their new supervisor in another building. As the two young men walked up the stairs in that building, they were laughing and joking as teenagers would. And when they reached the top of the stairs, they were stopped by a middle-aged white woman who apparently was the head secretary, who asked frantically in a tone, what are you doing here? The two looked at each other dazed and confused, not understanding why they were stopped, noticing everyone else getting a chance to walk by. Again, they were then asked in a frightened tone, why are you here? As they noticed that all the people walking by them were white, they responded simply, we are going to room 212. They began to look at the floor directory and walk in the direction that it pointed them in. As they reached the end of the hallway, they heard the lady who stopped them earlier yell, hey, Amy, watch them. As those words pierced through those young boys, the two walked into their new supervisor's office visibly shaking, upset, and teary-eyed for being targeted, stopped, and watched. As a 16-year-old boy, I became keenly aware that no matter what job I had, what suit I wore, or degrees I would attain, or any other professional accomplishment, I will always be seen as a black man, presumed a criminal, up to no good, simply because of the color of my skin. I still feel the frustration of that day whenever I think of it. And today, I think of the countless other young black boys and girls who have the similar experiences right here in Akron, right here in Akron Public Schools. And oftentimes, we have conversations about racism. It is described as a direct individual action of hatred, actions of exclusion. On the individual level, every day, we witness microaggressions and implicit biases. Cannot touch your hair. What sports do you play? Or you just oh-so articulate. Now, that may seem harmless on the surface, but comment after comment after comment done over a course of a lifetime, it causes harm. Racism is more than just that on the individual level. Racism is in the colorblind decisions that we make. Racism is seen in the boundaries we set. Racism is embedded in the way we write job descriptions. Racism is in the structures we set up to find the person who's just the right fit. As someone who studies this, and the research is clear, it shows over and over again that all of this causes real harm. We know that with training, along with adjusting hiring practices, we can help reduce those adverse effects. Today, as the Board of Education, we're taking a stance against racism as we consider this resolution and the nine actions incorporated in it. This is about the soul. This is about the consciousness. This is about the moral compass of Akron Public Schools' values. Those values are of equity. Those values are success for all students. All means all, not a select few. And it is a duty to the public that I think we all take very seriously. So racism is not the fault of any one individual. And this resolution or any action taken afterwards is not an indictment on any one person. However, this does not mean we will always be perfect. But what it does do is hopefully it sends a signal that we remain committed to getting it right. Now, some would say, where's the data to back up what you're saying? I mean, it makes sense that you asked the PhD in culture and race and education that question. Now, I could go over the litany of the imperial research that highlights the effects of racism on black and other marginalized communities. on Black and other marginalized communities, but if I were to truly answer that question, we would be here all day because it is my life's work. But I promise I won't do that to you. And as you can see, there are disparities exist. For those interested in some great research to dive deeper into race using longitudinal data to sift through this complex topic, I have a few really good resources for you. Now, I'd like to speak to the naysayers. Yeah, you know, them. To whom it may concern, who will ever feel any of our emails and other inboxes with messages and words of hate, please don't bother. Your messages of hate have no place in the educational pathway of our students, and we must ensure that every student, regardless of zip code or race, has the fairest chance at realizing their dreams. Now, in APS, there has been great progress over the years. We have an equity policy. We have adopted textbooks that are more representative of the students we serve, and we have programs that directly work with students in many different ways, from many different backgrounds. And we're proud of this work, as we should be. But if we're honest, which we are, we must admit that we can do more. So today, we begin that process of doing more with these nine actions. In this resolution declaring racism is a public health crisis that adversely impacts our students, staff, families and community at large. In it are nine actions to include. Racial equity policy to expand on our equity policy that we have. We also have additional integration of culturally relevant curriculum. And within our school buildings, we're reviewing diversity hiring and promotion trends and practices along with, along racial groups to better reflect the students we serve and emphasizing with Akron Public, Akron Police Department our standards and expectations of the culturally affirmed climate in our schools, and developing a policy to establish and support employee resource groups. Now, of course, this will be hard. And yes, it will require us to rethink our traditions that we've always done. You know, you've heard it, we've always done it this way. Now, over the past week, I've had the time to intentionally have a discussion about race and this resolution with each of our board members. If it's done nothing else, it has renewed my belief that each of us are in full support, taking a strong stance against this plague that has existed in the underbelly of this country. We will not talk around this topic and have committed ourselves to addressing it head-on. And for this, I say thank you to each of our board members and administrators. Now, we have work to do, but as always, we do it together. Together, we are APS. And just a small final note, if anyone thought this speech was long, the time I've spent speaking today pales in comparison to the eight minutes and forty-six seconds, which claimed a life when an officer chose to press his knee into the neck of George Floyd. Let that sit with all of us and move us into action. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar, and thank you for those words, and thank you for all of your work this past week on this resolution. And as Dr. Akbar pointed out, APS has a long history of progress. And we have worked very hard and very intentionally, and I think tonight shows that we are about taking it another step further, about declaring racism as a public health crisis in this country, in this community. And I would go so far as to say as well that, you know, the burden doesn't just fall on Akron Public Schools, and we encourage all of our counterparts across this community, across this state and across this country to follow suit and to stand up for what is right and what is just. So thank you so much for those words and for that presentation.
Mr. President, very quickly, may I move that the resolution declaring racism a public health crisis be adopted by this board?
Yes, ma'am, second. We have a second. We have a motion by Ms. McKittrick and a second by Mr. Alexander. And I'd like to open the floor for comments. Mr. Alexander?
Yes, I want to thank Dr. Akbar for, for developing a resolution. It is, it is needed, not just here in Akron Public Schools, but all school districts across the country. And when we talk about equity and we developed our equity policy, we developed that so that none of our kids were, would be left behind. But when you take a deeper dive into equity and you talk about what are the inequities in education, racism is one of the, the things that is under there and underneath it, and you have to, we have to always discuss that. And so therefore, we will need to also look at, and we will look at it in our Policy Committee, a, at a racial equity policy for Akron Public Schools to make sure that none of our students in Akron Public Schools are faced with any type of racism and that they will not have any, not have any inequities due to race or the color of their skin when they're receiving their education in Akron Public Schools. And I do know in Akron Public Schools, we will not allow that to happen, and we have worked hard to make sure that none of our students face that. So we will, we will definitely ensure that none of our students, not just some of them, but none of our students will face inequities and special racial inequities in Akron Public Schools. So thank you, and we will be working on a racial equity policy.
Thank you. Thank you. And I saw Ms. Mansfield next, Ms. Mansfield, and if any of you would like to speak after her, please let me know.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Dr. Akbar for this work, not only for the written work that you all see tonight with the resolution, but the time that he took this week in reaching out, I know to each of us, and in many cases, multiple times, and having conversations and starting, again, though it's not his responsibility to do so, to continue to teach us and to continue to, to open eyes and to help us to craft the words that were in our hearts, but, you know, not always the greatest way to say it, but he helped to craft them into something. So thank you, Dr. Akbar. Also, I want to make sure to thank Bruce Alexander because the groundwork that he began laying after going to Cube several years ago makes Akron Public Schools stand out. And I will never forget the fight that he has fought to make it easier for us to take this step in so many ways, right? We're not starting from square one. We're, we're partway in, and that's doing a great part to, to Mr. Alexander. I want to thank Dr. Glover for the work that she's done in the last year or so, working on helping to increase our staff that is, so that the racial makeup more matches our students. I think that's very important. I think back to the, the thoughts that have shaped my heart, so much goes back to the fact, my pediatrician was an African-American male, and my first-grade teacher was an African-American female. What differences that made in my life to, those were my views of, of African-Americans in my life, were people who taught me and who took care of me and who, who loved me. And I want all of our students to be able to feel that and to have that represent them when they, when they look at our teachers and at so much of our staff. Not that we all don't love them, because we do, but that, that, that just that extra piece that shows to their heart that, what they can be and what they can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, this is Dr. Hall. I think I have got a couple of comments. So first, again, let me sort of add to what you've all said and, and thanking Dr. Akbar for the time that he's taken. You know, and so, you know, not just with drafting the resolution along with Mr. Alexander and taking the time to reach out to each of us individually, but for taking the time to share a part of his story as well. I think that's, I think that really drives home the point. We hear, we hear the word progress used very often, and when you hear the word progress, it implies movement, whether it be physically, whether it be mentally, whether it be spiritually. And, you know, it is my, but when is, but what is, but when one is in motion, when one is progressing, the idea is to arrive somewhere at some point in the short, medium or long term. And it's my hope that within our lifetime, that we arrive at the destination that was dreamed of a long time ago by Dr. Martin Luther King, you know, which was to arrive in a country where one is judged by the content of their character and not by the color of their skin. So it is my hope that one day, we won't have to use the word progress because we will have arrived. So again, thank you for the time to share those thoughts. And again, want to thank all of you and Dr. Akbar especially for the work that he's done to drive these points home.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hall. Well said about progress has to lead somewhere, right? Any other comments?
I just briefly want to thank everyone for the, just the support, the conversations, and just the thought that was put into this. This resolution is where it is because of you. We started with many less actions than we ended up with. So thank you very much, and thank you to Dr. James and Ellen, or Dr. McWilliams Woods, and Diana Fidell as well for their support.
Thank you so much. Hearing no other comments or questions. And as Dr. Akbar pointed out, there are some very concrete things that Akron Public Schools is going to continue to work on. But we want to point out that we are also, as a board, we are saying that discrimination, that racism is a public health crisis. And although in our sphere, while we may not necessarily, the words that we say sometimes don't necessarily have the effect of law or direct where that funding or something might go because of what we're doing or what we're declaring, in this instance, we want to be loud and clear. And, Dr. Akbar, I thank you for all of your leadership on this. And as you said to the rest of the board, for all of you, this is, this was a labor of love, and it was something that we really felt very deeply about working on. So with that, we have a motion, we have a second, and we have roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are now moving into requests to address the board, and I'm going to ask for all of your patience and for those of you watching from home, thank you in advance for your patience. As we have several requests to address the board, all of which have been submitted to us either in writing, or they have submitted at our request a video that we can play during this portion of our agenda. So I am going to meander my way through that and hope that you will bear with me. Our first request to address the board comes from Miles Riley, and Miles is a sixth-grade student at STEM Middle School, and he wanted to share with us his feelings on racism. And so I am going to bring up Miles and share that with you now. So please give me just a moment.
My opinion on racism is that it's not okay and it shouldn't be happening, but breaking into malls and dealing stuff is not going to fix it at all. The only way we can fix it is if we gather together as a community and do something about it that's not harmful to other people or other people's business, businesses. And I think that just because the police, they still should get justice for what they do to other people. Even though they're police, that doesn't mean that they should be able to kill people if they're doing nothing wrong. And that's what I think about what's going on right now.
Thank you. That was, again, that was Miles Riley, a sixth grader at STEM Middle School. Rile, Miles, we agree with you, and thank you so much for submitting your comments to this board. Next, we have Elijah Payne. And Elijah is a sophomore at Firestone High School and wanted to submit the following statement to the Akron Public Schools Board of Education, and I am going to read Miles' statement. "Hi, my name is Elijah Payne, and I'm a sophomore at Firestone High School. I feel like racism can affect the schools, maybe because there are racist teachers out there that will give a student an F just because of the color of their skin. We can fix that by watching out and being extra careful of the teachers we are hiring to teach and be aware of any misconduct that may take place." We'd like to thank Elijah, a sophomore at Firestone High School, for submitting his comments to this board. Thank you, Elijah. We appreciate that, and we will continue to do our best. Next is Lisa McCraney, and she submits, "Hello, Akron Public School Board members. My name is Lisa McCraney. I am the founder and executive director of Healing Hearts Counseling and Consultation Services." And she would like the opportunity to come before the board to discuss racism and the social and emotional impact it has on students of color within our district." And I'm going to share her video with you. So again, please give me one moment to do so.
Evening to the members of the Akron Public Schools Board of Directors. My name is Lisa McCraney, and I'm the founder and executive director of Healing Hearts Counseling and Consultation Services, and Lisa Speaks to LLC. I'm addressing the board to speak on racism and social injustices as it pertains to the hundreds of students who attend Akron Public Schools, students of color particularly, who have, also have social and emotional concerns and/or diagnoses. I think that now more than ever before, it is essential to give voice to the concerns that are experienced by many but mentioned by few. Prior to going into private practice, I spent eight years working as a school-based therapist for pastoral counseling service, which is now Red Oak Behavioral Health. I cannot number the times that I've had to intervene or advocate on behalf of my clients as racism became a barrier to them learning in their classrooms and to their growth and willingness to find hope in my office. I have heard with my ears, teachers tell students that they will be crackheads and weed heads, just like their parents. I've seen with my eyes some of my former clients' skin color be used as a weapon against them to have them removed from the classrooms and in some instances, removed from the buildings in general. I could tell story after story about the injustices that my former clients and students and their families experienced, but this limited time prohibits me from doing so. I will, however, briefly share a bit of my own."
All right, I seem to be having some issues with that video. So I am going to, I'm going to see if I need to come back to that one. If not, I will also share that with each of you, and we will also make sure that it is somehow public and included as a part of the permanent record of this meeting. So because we're having issues and it seems to stop, I did play it earlier and it played well. We're going to move on to the next one. But again, I will make sure that that's available and that the full video is a part of the permanent public record, so I will share that with all of you as well. Our next video is from Sarah Balzer, and we're going to share her video with you as well. So give me one moment and I will share that one.
Thank you Akron School Board for the opportunity to speak with you about the urgent need to recognize racism as a public health crisis. My name is Sarah Balzer and I have a master's in medical science, public health, and social work. I've been working in the realm of public health for the last 11 years. I would like to highlight research that has come out of the most recent community health assessment by Summit County Public Health. In Summit County, year after year, black students lag behind white students by 20 or more percent in third grade reading proficiency, which is strongly correlated with higher academic achievement in later grades. For those over 25 in Summit County, 33% of white residents have at least a four-year degree compared to 15% of black residents. In 2015, the median earnings of a person with a four-year degree was about $50,000 compared to $33,000 for someone with a two-year degree. According to an article out of the New England Journal of Medicine, the lower the education a person has correlates to a higher number of years of life loss. For example, a person without a high school education lost 12.8 potential life years per person in that population. The black poverty rate in Summit County has been double or more than double the countywide rate every year since 1990. I will note the white poverty rate is below the county rate. The most recent rating on residential segregation in Summit County by University of Michigan's Population Study Center was 59.7, with zero being complete integration and 100 being complete segregation, meaning more people of color are concentrated in the same neighborhoods. The county examined the following social determinants of health, finding the black rate for diabetes deaths was two to one. The infant mortality rate was two to one. The long-term suspension from schools was three to one, black to white. Incarceration rates in child poverty was almost four to one, black to white. Employment was almost three to one. The study in the New England Journal of Medicine also found that when adjusted for age, sex, and level of education, the number of potential life years lost from all causes of death was 35% greater for blacks than for whites. These results can be linked to historical racism in the field of medicine where people of color have largely been underrepresented and studies being determining best practices for treatment. Implicit bias by teachers and medical professionals who treat black and brown students and patients differently than white students and patients. Knowing the severe impact of trauma on human beings, we know the constant threat of policing on black people can serve as further and sometimes immediately deadly trauma. Racism is unfortunately institutionalized in our country and community. And the first step is to acknowledge this fact by treating racism as the public health crisis it is. Our brothers and sisters of color are being crushed under the weight of racism. The data is conclusive, staggering, and heartbreaking. Your leadership on this front is vital. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you, Akron School Board, for that.
All right, and I want to thank Ms. Balzer, and in case we didn't point it out, she is from the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. She is the OSAM Regional Epidemiologist, and so we want to thank her as well as Ms. McCraney for her videos. Next, we have Brandon Payne, and I'm going to pause just a moment and look at my screen and make sure that I'm still live and that you're still live and that everybody's with me because it's been a little quiet for a moment. Looks like we're... Thank you. Brandon Payne is our next person that would like to address the Board of Education. And he's a senior at Firestone High School and he provided us with a statement that I'm going to read. Hi, my name is Brandon Payne and I'm a senior at Firestone High School. As a biracial male, I personally think that we should declare racism as a public health crisis because it affects the lives of many people of color, including myself, my family, and my friends. It forces us to live our lives constantly worrying about what could happen to us and the people we love. It's not right that we have to live with this fear. We should be able to go on jogs and go on walks in our neighborhoods without having to worry about our lives. I think that declaring racism a public health crisis and punishing people for it could possibly help. It would make people think twice about committing hate crimes before doing them. Now, I don't like the idea of a closet racist. I feel like it is the best way we will be able to get at this time. It would be near impossible to get racist people to see the world without hate and to think like we do. I just hope my children and my grandchildren will not have to deal with this kind of hatred in the future. And Mr. Payne, we feel the exact same way, I know, as a board, and thank you for your comments. I got a little moved in the middle of those, so I apologize for that. All right, and finally, we have James and Karen Reddick, and I am going to share their video with you. They submitted a video to us as well, so if you could please bear with me just a moment.
Mr. President, I can't hear anything he's saying.
Yeah, I was wondering if I was the only one.
Yeah, I can't hear anything.
Patrick?
Okay, give me just a moment and I will restart it. Can you hear it right at the moment?
Yes.
Give me just a second and let me restart it. I apologize.
I'm here on behalf of the racism that's going on in America. I just feel it's a shame that we haven't gotten further than what we're supposed to. You know, we still fight racism. I mean, you know, I just feel that, you know, it's a shame and that we should, you know, we all should work together, you know, to eliminate that, but you know, what can you do? You know, what can you do is to teach our children and they teach their children about racism. Even though, you know, you have people that smile on your face but stab you in your back. So, you know, that's my take on it.
My name is Karen Reddick and I grew up, born and raised here in West Akron. We grew up not, you know, hating people for the color of our skin, but even though things happened or people treated us that way because of the color of our skin, we weren't raised that way, but it's just the way we had to learn how to live and navigate in this society. And then like teaching our children, definitely my young black son, I had to teach him, you have to work twice as hard to be considered half as good in the society that we live in. And even with his accolades, his MBA and all that, working for the Attorney General's Office, even going out, including downtown Columbus, he was denied entering the place just because of the color of his shoes, but really the color of his skin, I'm sure. But we still have to navigate and keep going in life and praying that things get better. And things have gotten some better. It truly has. We live in a very diverse area where we are here in West Akron, probably one of the diverse neighborhoods in Akron. And we appreciate it and we all accept each other for who we are, race, color, you know, religions, sexual orientation and all that. But I could still go into a store right now today and if this person is standing there, a white person, they'll ask them, may I help you before they'll help me if I'm even standing there first? And those little things like that that happen, not all the time, but they still do happen. So we do see hope though, even watching all these protests, even in all of what's going on now. The diversity of the protesters, this is a nationwide protest. So I do see some hope and maybe we can get over another hump in this racism and how it impacts us as a society. And we're just going to keep praying for that. And thank you for listening. We appreciate the opportunity.
All right, and we want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Reddick for those words and we appreciate all of you who took the time to submit something to the board this evening. And most especially to our students who took the time to reach out to their board members. Yeah, yeah. NJ, I see you making the, yeah, you have our hearts and thank you so much for reaching out. It means a lot to us to be able to hear from you. I have one more thing before we get into the regular business portion of our agenda. And so I'm going to do one more screen share, so thank you all for your patience and for bearing with me tonight. So I am going to turn off my camera and present now. And this presentation that I'm about to give, I'm really giving on behalf, and many of you know him, Eric Fletcher, who works with the Ohio State University and works with their Young Scholars Program. And I want to say to Eric for always being there, for representing the Ohio State University so well, for working with our students, for really taking them by the hand and helping to make sure that some of our students in this district are successful. Thank you so much for reaching out, even in this time of COVID, to make sure that we knew and could celebrate those students who have been successful in your program. And we are so happy to celebrate them tonight, so I'm going to share that right now. So give me one moment, please. And so on behalf of Eric Fletcher and the Ohio State University's Office of Diversity and Inclusion Young Scholars Program, Eric wanted to let us know that we had 10 graduating young scholars this year from Akron Public Schools. Seven of those young scholars will be attending the Ohio State University and with a little under half a million dollars awarded for four years of undergraduate education, at an average of almost $16,000 awarded each year to each scholar annually. The YSP Scholarship meets 100% of demonstrated financial need and out of, I think it's a testament, 88 scholars across the state of Ohio in the 2020 graduating class and 10 of those from Akron Public Schools, seven of whom again will be attending the Ohio State University on scholarship. And they are Suave Cargill from Akron STEM High School, Cheyenne Geider from Akron STEM High School, Priya Harris from Akron Early College High School, Ananya Garrett from Firestone High School, Akira Johnson from Booktall High School, Kobe Keith from Booktall High School, Kami Koenig from Ellett High School, Blute La from Akron Early College High School, Maria White from Firestone High School, Zaire Singleton from Firestone High School. And we want to congratulate all of those students again. Seven from Akron Public Schools that'll be attending the University of Akron. 10 altogether in Akron Public Schools and almost half a million dollars in scholarships. So many thanks to the Ohio State University and to Eric Fletcher for such an amazing program and congratulations to all of those graduates. We really appreciate your hard work. Do we have anything else in terms of community and school reflections, presentations, any other comments before we move on to the regular portion, regular business portion of our meeting? Okay, hearing none, then we have regular meeting minutes and special meeting minutes from May 18th and May 27th respectively. And we are looking for a motion for approval for those meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Autry, a second from Mrs. McKittrick. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall? Dr. Hall? There you go. Is it off mute yet?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Michael, we're still showing that the mute button is pressed. Sorry. I'm like, it says a view. Okay, aye. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's Recommendations Personnel?
Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories five through 16.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Mansfield and a second by Mr. Alexander, and it looks like Dr. Hall, you have a question. You're muted. Go ahead.
Yep, I'm trying to unmute. Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay, again, it's just technological glitch. I know normally we have bios sent over on the building administrators and so I may have missed that this time around. Just would respectfully request that if we could get those sent over to us. It's very helpful for the new board members who don't always know, you know, who some of the folks are that are being moved around. So I know Kathy McVay, Ms. McVay, I know that you typically send those over to us. So if we could get those for the building administrators, that'd be fantastic. Other than that, I don't have any other comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, no comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw you light up for a second there. Just wanted to make sure. All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda items. Any other comments, questions, or discussion?
Mr. President, I had just had a quick comment. I just wanted to wish well. Ms. Henderson from Case, she did a fantastic job bringing IB to Case Elementary and due to a move by her family, she's leaving the district. So just wanted to give a shout out to her for all her hard work.
A second.
Thank you so much. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Dr. Akbar?
I'm sorry, I couldn't get off mute too fast. But I thought that I had opportunity to meet with her as Firestone Cluster liaison and I didn't even want to leave. So I'm kind of sad that she is leaving us, but wish her well. God well done.
Well said. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Dr. Hall. Let me do a pivot, do a mea culpa. It seems I missed an email on June 5th regarding those bios, so let me acknowledge that for the record's sake. So my apologies to the group. So I would try to be a better about not missing that, not missing certain select the emails. So again, my apologies.
Well, good. Then Kathy's not in trouble, so all of...
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My apologies, Ms. McVay.
That's okay. Thank you.
All right.
I got your back.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21.
Thank you. We have a motion on the consent agenda items?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. A motion by Mrs. McKittrick, a second by Mrs. Mansfield. Any comments, question, or discussion on the consent agenda items? Ms. Autry?
Yes. So my comment actually is about 21.3. I think that falls in that category. So I just, I wanted to acknowledge and thank the Gar Foundation for that grant, but it looks like we were awarded an $18,000 grant to do a parent survey to gauge the needs for food, internet, and other items during the COVID crisis. And I just wanted to say for the... items during the COVID crisis. And I just wanted to say for the record personally, thanks to the Gar Foundation. But it seems to me as if we probably have access to that information without having to spend $18,000. That's just my opinion. It doesn't seem very practical to me personally, and there might be something I'm not aware of, but I am thankful for that grant and the opportunity to support our district. I just, you know, when it comes to the need for food and internet, we probably can call any principal in the building who can give us that information without spending $18,000. That's just my opinion and comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Akbar?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that one of the resolutions, 21.2, I believe it is, is our resolution to accept the money related to emergency relief fund for elementary and secondary schools for the COVID-19 response from the CARES Act. So just wanted to say we're accepting that resolution today if we vote.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Yes, Dr. Hall?
My apologies again. My, I'm, I see, I seem to have teased you all way too often about your internet connections. I'm having my own problems this evening. At the risk of being redundant, Ms. Autry, I'm sorry, I, my, I lost connection while you were talking. I was going to ask if you wouldn't mind repeating what you said just a minute ago. If that's okay with the group?
Yes. Ms. Autry?
So I was giving my appreciation to the Gar Foundation for the $18,000 grant, which we are using to do a parent survey to gauge the needs for food and internet and other items during the COVID crisis. And while I do have appreciation for that grant money, I didn't find it to be very practical unless there's something I was missing and I had stated that we could probably call any principal in the building and get that information without having to spend $18,000. So that was just my point I wanted to make from a practical point of view.
Okay. Thank you for sharing.
So, so if I could ask, this is a follow-up question then, you know, is there, you know, I think the Ms. Autry's point, you know, was there, you know, what then is sort of the, I guess, what are we sort of proposing as kind of, as being the merit, the merits, if you will, of how that money is allocated is, you know, I know that, you know, arguably, you know, there, there are scientific, you know, more scientific ways to collect data. You know, but again, I just, but I think the Ms. Autry's point, I think she raised a good point from a transparency standpoint. Do we have thoughts on how we would sort of make that money? Or ensure that that $18,000 being spent really sort of was worth the expenditure? So again, I think it's a good point. So wants to comment on that?
Yeah, could someone talk about that maybe?
I can certainly have Kirsten Toth and Christine Mayer come to the next board meeting to explain part of the rationale for giving us that grant for the specific purpose of having Burgess and Burgess actually do a parent survey, which was cross-tabbed to get an idea of how people are doing and their opinions about Akron Public Schools.
Yeah, so I guess my other question then was going to be with respect, and thank you, Dr. James, for that, for that additional clarification there. So, so my assumption then is that once the results of those surveys, I'm sorry, once result that survey is completed, then that they would sort of bring that back to this group then.
That's great.
digestion. All right, Roger that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments, questions, or discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes, with abstaining from that particular item that I mentioned.
Thank you. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category 23.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Mansfield, my second by Mr. Alexander, I believe, ring in first. There's a lot here. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the business affairs? Autry?
Yes, I had a question about item 23.2. Payment for the lease agreement for the use of Central Howard. I was just wondering if we had a number and it's probably something I should know from the Finance Committee, but is that comparable to like the upkeep for our other buildings, $350,000?
Mrs. Autry, no, that's much less than the upkeep of our other buildings. We're splitting the costs. We're about 50, if I remember correctly, about, we're using 55% of the building. University of Akron is using the balance of the building. So when there are any maintenance costs, we're paying our share of that as part of that agreement with the Innovation Generation Scholarship Program.
A great question. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Dr. I actually had a question as well. Can you hear me?
Yes, I said, yeah, sorry. I was saying, yes, go ahead. You and then Dr. Akbar.
Okay, thank you. No, so I guess my question was with respect to, again, could have gone back to that, the grant that GR had gave, had given us. Was there, was there language that, that would have prescribed that we use Burgess and Burgess? My assumption is probably not. And then if not, sort of, you know, just, I just, I just want to understand sort of how we arrived at Burgess and Burgess to be the folks to do that survey. I know that there's probably others that do that in the area as well. I just want to make sure that I have an understanding of sort of how we arrived or what process we employed to get to Burgess and Burgess.
That was a requirement of the grant.
Oh, it was a requirement of the grant. Okay, I understand. Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you. Dr. Akbar, did you have something?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to acknowledge two things, and I think that I think the one is, is new. So in, in 23.10, we are signing a memorandum of understanding with Akron Summit Community Action for Head Start Programs. And and I think that we all know how important Head Start is and just that that's a significant amount. But not significant enough. I mean, so we can do more. Hopefully we will, if we have the resources to do so. And then in 23.13, I think that that's a great thing that we're doing with the Summit Lake Reach Opportunity Center. And I'm wondering, is this, are those ELP classrooms new or are they just continuing to support them?
No, that's a continuation. When the building was constructed, you know, we paid for our section, which includes the, they were actually two early learning kindergarten classrooms. We are a portion, a percentage of the maintenance costs and operating costs for the building based on the square footage of our part of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then I, I'm sorry, I had, I did have another question.
Go ahead.
With regard to item 23, that's 16. Do we, so, you know, this is for the IB program, professional development, as I recall. Do, so, you know, this line is really for folks over at Case CLC. Do we sort of, do we engage in similar professional development for, for all the, for all the schools that, that offer IB or is this, I know Case is brand new to the IB circuit. So is this a one-time expenditure or is something that we would do yearly for schools that have, that offer IB curriculum?
Right. All of the schools will have varying levels of professional development depending on where they are in the IB process. So they're using their school quality improvement grant for this training, which is related to IB. So yes, that's a typical yearly, there's a yearly cost for various trainings related to the IB program. And it depends on where they are in the process.
Gotcha. And then, and then quick follow-up. So so is there, is there a yearly, for lack of a better word, licensing fee that we pay in order to keep our IB status for those? Okay, 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 gotcha.
Good, thank you. Anyone on Ms. Autry?
Yeah, I have a clarifying question on item 23.17. And it's regarding the New Tech Network decrease. So it stated that it was due to a change in a professional development to accommodate for College and Career Academy. Is that due to some overlap? Is it that College and Career Academy professional development covered what the New Tech Network professional development provided or what's the?
I believe so. I'm going to ask Dr. McWilliams was because that one, I did have a conversation with Tamiko and it has completely left my mind, but I think it's because there was some overlap, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct. Some of the training originally scheduled ended up, because of the College and Career Academy training, it ended up either being a duplication or it was close enough that we didn't need to finish the New Tech piece. So it was just an adjustment in their original budget.
Thank you.
Good questions. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, we have a motion and a second on the Business Affairs Agenda Items. Roll call, please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes, abstaining on 23.18.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes, abstaining on 23.27.
Thank you. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Just one thing I know, you know, as we pay attention to governor's announcements, I know, I believe last week he talked about, you know, school is going to open. I know there's some legislation, I believe, from Senator Huffman, you know, trying to make some adjustments and really putting that more on, you know, the schools and not necessarily having school opening, you know, influenced by the governor or maybe the Department of Health. You know, we still have our teams who are working on, you know, our contingency plans for how we can open school. From where I sit, a lot of that will depend on the Health Department guidelines at the time. So I've asked the teams to, yeah, come up with what we think will happen, but also make sure that it's, we can vary it enough so we can deal with any changes. You know, the reset restart plan, I haven't seen where that's actually been released yet. I know they're still working on it, but I know a lot of people, you know, Rick Lewis from the School Boards Association, I think, you know, Bass, OASBO, I think all of the associations are keenly waiting on that guidance as well as many of our parents and our employee groups as well. So I continue to meet with our bargaining unit presidents each week to give them an update on, you know, where the status of that reset restart plan is. And many of them or members are involved in our large committee on reopening. So it's, you know, we hope to have something later this month that we may be able to share with the board as well.
Good, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any questions or comments for the superintendent? Hearing none, I already gave really my report earlier, other than again, to thank each of you for your work, your recent work, to thank our staff for wrapping up a phenomenal year that was unlike any since I've been on the board and probably unlike any in recent history. And to say again, congratulations to the class of 2020. Our hearts are with you and we wish you the best. And please remember that we're always here if you need something. So Treasures Report?
Thank you, Mr. President. No formal report tonight. I would like to plant a seed though. On June 10th, the Ohio Department of Taxation releases its May numbers. That may heavily influence the governor and the Department of Education on what kind of budget looks like for public K-12 next year. So we have scheduled a finance committee for next week. And we'll be reviewing that as well as some of the equity policies and any adjustments to forecasts. So we want to make sure to, I guess, filter those appropriately and start to take a deep dive into those expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. I did forget one other thing that I had written down for you as a, as part of my report. Dr. Akbar and I had a meeting this morning to discuss our levy discussion format. And we have another meeting scheduled with administration tomorrow morning. So we will actually be sending you some updated guidance on how we'll be moving forward with those levy discussions and what those levy discussions will cover. So please stay tuned. We'll be sending you some follow-up emails and scheduling requests in the next couple of days. All right. Committee reports, legal contracts, and board policy?
We have no report, but we will be meeting this Wednesday. So we'll have a report for you the next board meeting.
Thank you so much. Finance and capital management?
Yeah, we don't have a report either. But again, we do have upcoming meetings that have been scheduled. So looking forward to bringing that back to this group.
Thank you so much. Instructional policy and student achievement?
At the risk of repeating everything Dr. James said, I will just reiterate very briefly that of course, the district is working on a reopening plan. And two models will be sent to Dr. James this month. But of course, everything is dependent on what comes from the governor's office and the Health Department.
I would also add that Mrs. McKittrick and I sat in on a student achievement meeting with OSBA and got to hear, and they did break into those small group sessions and we did get to be in a group with some folks from North Royalton and Hudson to hear what their reopening plan was like. I will say many of the people that we were in, in the overall group with, were really just beginning their planning. So again, kudos to our administration for not sitting around and waiting for the year to end before we started planning the next. The other thing that I know that we want to stress also is that considering the current climate, there will be an all online option for those who are interested in it. I know there's been some concern about that by some parents and there's been some movement toward possible online charter schools. I would discourage people from doing that. And to look into APS Online, if you're looking for an online option, you're not going to get any better than ours. So please, if you have questions about that, I actually had a son who did a blended environment due to health reasons with APS Online. So I'd be happy to answer questions people have and put them in touch with the people who really know what they're doing, who helped me. So please know that we don't want to lose folks that are, are really concerned or maybe have a child with a health reason who shouldn't be in class, only member who can't risk exposure. So please know that there'll be that option. Thank you.
Good, thank you so much. Anything else or any comments or questions for instructional policy, student achievement, or any of the committees? With that, do we have any unfinished business?
No, Mr. President.
Any new business?
No. Uh, no, Mr. President.
You know, you're helping me stall, right? I just wanted to make sure I got to the screen that, uh, had our, uh, reasons for executive session, because we do have, uh, need for an executive session this evening. So pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22 and, uh, G1, uh, to discuss the compensation of a public employer official, uh, of the district. Also, uh, G, G4, reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. And also, G3, a conference with our attorney, um, concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. I'm going to ask for a motion to recess into executive session, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Just take your pick, Mr. Pendleton. We have them all.
Ms. Autry?
Yeah.
And Dr. Akbar?
Dr. Akbar?
Yes. All right, uh, roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittick?
Yes.
Thank you.
As always, we will exit this session. Please make sure you hang up and completely exit this session, and we'll see you in the executive session, and then we'll return when we are finished. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back to the regular board meeting for June 8th, 2020. Uh, we are back in regular session. We do have a couple of resolutions and actions that we need to take. So the first is our resolution regarding child nutrition tentative agreement. We're looking for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion from Ms. Mansfield, a second by Mr. Alexander. Are there any comments, question or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
This is McKittick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next resolution is item 32.2, a resolution for a pay increase for child nutrition elementary helpers. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. McKittick, a second from Ms. Autry. Are there any comments, question or discussions on this item? Hearing none, roll call.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yeah.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, we have a resolution 30, uh, in section 32.3 for staff reduction for hearing impaired interpreters. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. McKittick, a second from Mr. Alexander. Are there any comments, question or discussion on this final item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
This is McKittick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, one final thank you for, again, for everything you guys have done, uh, recently and for getting us through the end of the year. If there's nothing else for the board, we will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Alexander and Ms. McKittick, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Good night, everyone.
All right.
Bye. Thanks, everybody.
Dr. Hall, you guys.
Good night, everyone.
All right, you guys take care.